Welcome everyone to the April thirteenth special virtual meeting of the school committee. You know, given the social distancing and everything that's going around, I'm wishing everyone good health here at home that's listening to us on QA TV, channel twenty-two and to my colleagues. There are a couple of things we have to get out of the way before we begin. According to Governor Baker's orders, offending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting live on QA TV, channel twenty-two. The meeting will also be recorded for rebroadcast and posted on the QPS website on Wednesday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Just a few rules and reminders of how I'll conduct this meeting. Please bring your microphone on your device, whether it's a phone or a computer when you're not speaking. Please do not speak unless formally recognized. And I will open the floor for comments preceding each agenda item. For this meeting, I'll first call upon those participating only by phone if they have comments. And after, a member who is participating via video conference and wishes to speak should physically raise their hand to be called upon considering I can see you through the video chat. So with that out of the way, I'll turn it over to Mr. Superintendent to call the role and identify those on the superintendent team who are also participating in the call. So with that, Mr. Superintendent, please go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Brigoli. How about this, Mr. Andronico?
Present.
Mr. Gattro?
Present.
Mrs. Hubley?
Present.
Mrs. Lebo?
Present.
Mr. Santoro?
Present.
Mayor Coke?
Present.
And Mr. Brigoli.
Did he mute his mic?
Do we want to just recognize them as we go right there?
I believe, I believe so. We'll try that.
Present.
There you go.
Thank you. Also, a present on, on the video this evening, Deputy Superintendent Kevin Moby, Matty Roy, Colickton, Marra Papil, Director of Student Support, Erin Perkins, Director of Special Education and Elementary Education, and our own School Committee, and Jim Molyneux, Director of Business Affairs.
Okay. So with that, we'll move to the first item on our agenda, the city of Quincy COVID nineteen update from Mayor Coke. The mayor, take it away.
Thank you, everybody. I'll just try to run through some items here then, obviously they're not all school related, but they're certainly related to the COVID nineteen. We're up to about three hundred and sixty confirmed cases in Quincy, and we've had fourteen deaths to date. But we are now approaching a hundred and ten who are fully recovered. As you may know, Massachusetts has been hit pretty hard. It's up over twenty-five thousand cases now. Again, Ruth Jones and her team have been incredible, as has been working with the governor and his team. We have had some hot starts, so to speak, with the nursing homes, and we are watching closely some of our housing authority buildings. We're asking everybody to please, please follow the new vision election order, the state unit advisory issued by the housing authority. And actually, you know, if people have to go out, obviously, we have the maps that has been suggested. In addition, as a city, we've, I'm really proud of the efforts, everybody working so hard together. We have two rental assistance programs that more than two hundred have applied through already. One with the Quincy Chamber of Commerce and Tim Cahill for rental assistance for housing, and QCAP with Beth Ethan Stroll again for housing assistance. And that's been funded by our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we appreciate them working on that. Cynthia Sierra and Man Community Health, John Skins, Izwinski and Father Bills, Joe Finn, the State Sheltering Coalition, the YMCA, all work together very well to create a system whereby we're monitoring the homeless population. We have them in good coverage. We thank Ash from Howard Johnson's that become a place we use in isolation units, and that has gone pretty well. The city has funded a number of things through one appropriation, which we use some unused snow and ice monies to help us set up a testing site with the tents for manatees, help us to put some additional resources into all the food countries, as well as other expenses, PPEs that we've been securing for our first responders. Our cleaning department's been active with our TDBG monies as well as the SBA programs, helping small businesses with their challenges and hoping to meet their needs with, with its grants alone. Can't say enough about the work of Governor Baker and his team. We've been on the phone, Karen Plead on more so on a regular basis. Congressman Stephen Lynch has been pretty amazing as well, keeping us in the loop in the federal pieces. In fact, we submitted just the other day a quite a wish list toward the stimulus package, which is now being discussed. That's the next phase, the two trillion dollars that was passed. We're still waiting for a little bit of guidance from both the federal government and the state government, even though it's kind of formula driven, the number on how that money can be spent down. That's expenditures between March and December thirty-first going into the end of the calendar year. But I am confident based on the guidance we're getting to date that we're doing the right thing with it. None of this can be used for backfilling or subplanting. It's used for direct expenditures and appropriations for the late tooth virus. We reckon on that. I know the doctor will talk a little bit later about technology, but we're certainly going to use the, some of that money towards some of the challenges, which is probably going to be more for September is my guess than, than toward the end of the school year because of the backlog in getting the equipment. But working on that with the doctor and his team, and hopefully we'll be in a good place a little further down the line. You know, we continue to encourage people to follow the guidelines. We have a hotline at the health department, six one seven three seven six one two eight eight. People have any questions. And I know Ruth and her team will, will continue to assist. I know that the schools have been active and, and I know that, I think we're approaching seven thousand meals since we started. And thank the cafeteria food service folks that have been working hard on that. And I know we've been in regular contact with the superintendent on individual issues that do pop up, and I'm sure each of you have. And I encourage people in the question, if you have any questions or concerns, to call the superintendent's office directly when we reach out to the staff. And I think that's worked pretty well. So again, I want to thank everybody on the front lines. Pretty amazing team working. Everybody's running in the same direction. Nobody's, at least I haven't confronted any issues of ego. Everybody's working very hard for the public health and safety of our residents, and hopefully this thing will pass soon. We get to some sort of normalcy, but thank you to all who have been involved from the start.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for that update. I know we, we appreciate it. I think we'll move right into our, our second agenda item there. Full of minutes for March fourth regular meeting, the March fourth executive session, and the April fifth special meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Brigoli, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those pass, and we'll move to the third item on the agenda, superintendent's report. So, Mr. Superintendent, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, for that update. Just a few things that are going on, and I think we'll start with really some good news. You know, Sarah DeFoy, as you know, is extraordinary, and she does a great job as our food service director, and we have had the Fresh Green Wondering Machine going to our elementary schools. She applied for a Whole Foods Foundation grant and was granted for nine traveling salad bars. So all of our, we own three, so all of our elementaries will have their own salad bar, and I want to thank her very, very much because it moves a lot to these kids. And, you know, certainly nutrition is very, very, well, it's enhanced by, by having something like this at every elementary school. So I want to thank her very, very much. Looking at our breakfast and lunch distribution, you know, starting from week one with March, I think, you know, going from two thousand, say, two thousand forty-five, combined breakfast, lunch, going up to increasing eight hundred and twenty-five meals within the next week, and then the next week for eight to four-ten, increasing one thousand one-six-seven, I'm sorry, and then for eight to four-ten, increasing over two thousand meals at our eight, our eight sites. So, you know, I want to make sure we thank food services, thank our principals of support, and really our SLT that, that is really watching over the whole meal distribution process. So as of today, there's sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-one meals distributed to our, to our families. So again, thank you to all who really, you know, when you think about it, it's increasing, you know, and I think the more increase, the more we know that people really are needing out there, and we're filling the need the very, very best that we can. You know, taking a look at the Patriot Ledger, actually, the mayor had called and said that the ledger was inquiring about our cleaning and about our Quincy companions. And so Director Coordinator Kevin Sagala met with, with the photographer and took some pictures of, you know, five of our custodies. I think, yeah, five of our custodians cleaning. We use Southwest with the, everything was right there, the gymnasium, the bathrooms, the classrooms, to share, you know, how they do clean. So she was, the photographer was very impressed, not that the pictures, obviously, too. Mary Woodville, and she wrote a very nice article, making sure that our custodians get the credit that they, that they do. They really, they are working very, very hard. And so I think, you know, thank her for that. Thank the mayor for referring her to us. You know, the next one to take a look at really was women professional development. And, you know, I wanted to make sure that the MOA, that MOA one, MOA two, really focused on, a bit of it focused on professional development. And I think our teachers are working incredibly hard on it right now, and the one really, and the second one began today. The first round, you know, looking at, you know, about sixty offerings to, to our staff from March twelfth through April sixteenth. And, you know, looking at special education was one that was a big draw. Looking at classroom management at grade three to eight, they draw guidance psychologists, trauma-informed resilient schools, Google one-on-one math work workshops. All of those were mostly the, out of the sixty, those were the highly sought-after. So, you know, that, that worked out very, very well. We look at now really about a thousand signups. So people signed up for more than one, you know, so a thousand people that signed up. The first section, the first MOA, we had over eight hundred right now that have finished the professional development according to the MOA. And others are just signing in or really recording this. So Erin and Maddie and Bridget and Sarah, so many are working at bringing it all together. Rita Bailey, the nurses, bringing it all together to make sure that everyone has done, accomplished the professional development that, that we want in, in the MOA. The second MOA, we looked at lowering or minimizing the amount, really going just from sixty to fifty-six offerings. Again, many of the offerings are all across, whether it's academic programs, academic classrooms, academic support, really going all the way through our school system and making sure that everyone has something for them. So again, fifty-six offerings versus the sixty that we had had in the first round of PD within the MOA. And there are new categories of digital tools. You know, the new Google Meet is newer, mastering Google Classroom assignments, much newer, using Jamboard, and we'll get really Google collaboration. So heavily focused on Google Classroom with our real teachers as well. So we're spreading it out that we, at first was a little bit narrow, but I think we've broadened the offerings and broadened the digital tools that our teachers are using. We added five in this round. You know, all in all, the first round, there were twenty-seven facilitators, whether it be principals or department heads, SLT, or our professional staff. So a really great contribution to professional development as we look at MOA two and requirements for the memorandum of agreement. The other thing, just with that accompanying that of the teams, you know, we're, we're, you know, still working as much as possible without being overburdening with teams, whether it be grade level teams, vertical teams, our academic program teams like literacy, nursing services. They continue to work on their goals, but also talk about their effect on our kids and their effect on student participation. Following up with so much of contacting students that they know, families that may be in need. So they, they really are doing a really great job and appreciate everything that they're doing. So, so with, with the professional development and the team meetings, there is a lot, a lot going on within technology that we have, that we have going on right now. So just to continue, you know, ask and support, ask and support, there are over six hundred calls that we, and we're looking at resetting, resetting passwords. Our secretaries, many of our secretaries are working to do that as well as our principals. So that's over six hundred of those, mostly looking at our, you know, as we published our report cards. So they're, they're working, they're working with those parents that need it to reset faster. Google Classroom support, two thousand, really two thousand eight hundred individuals have looked at or called for Google Classroom support. Our IT techs have been very, very good at, at really making sure that people get a call right back. You know how important it is that their kids get on Google. Our principals as well get a lot of calls from their parents, and they return those calls immediately. Chromebook distribution, right now, we have about eight hundred, a little over, let me just check again here. Looking at about eight hundred people that we are distributing, distributing our Chromebooks to. And we have even more, another three hundred parents and two more parents that have said that they're in need of. So they're scheduled within the next few days, and just to make sure, what is the process? The process for doing this is they request directly through Laura. Either that or it comes from a teacher. You know, the teacher gets in that our students need help within technology, their family needs help in technology. So it comes from the teacher to the principal, the principal to Laura. Laura sets up the list, verifies that there are actually students in the Quincy Public Schools and families in the Quincy Public Schools, and then it goes to Keith, and Keith and his team put together a schedule. Then they come out here in Cottington, people pull up, Mike Drakeo is, is at the opening, you know, the driveway and making sure they go and circle around and get in line. And everything is done within social distancing. Everyone has the appropriate PPE, so they feel very good about dealing with the public in this, this very, very unique, unique way. So I think that, that that process is going good. Again, Keith Sagala, Sarah Anderson, the IT staff, Bart Cavalo, Mike Drakeo, Julie Graham, Kevin Sagala, have been really instrumental in making sure that the access for our public is, is pretty immediate, and we do the very, very best we can. But a lot of people have really helped that whole effort. So, and then Mayor Coke talked to, just mentioned very briefly about the IT. I think, you know, when he looks at his vision, when we're looking at the summer, we're looking at the fall. The mayor has talked to us about looking at our middle school and high school for September. And, and take a look and saying, how can we be supportive? We know now that it would be great if all of our students had access through loan, through loaning a, a Google, a Google Doc, a, help me with this. Yeah, thanks. You know what? I don't know why. I was, I was stuck on Google. I don't, stuck on Google. But so, you know, we have the Chromebooks out there, and what the mayor's looking at is possibly taking a look if for the fall to make sure our middle school students and our high school students, you know, have access loaned, you know, to their, to their homes so they can do so much at, at home that maybe they couldn't do. So I think we've learned that there is a need out there. I think school committee's been talking about that. I think the mayor understands that. So we're looking at that and we'll share it with the mayor as far as what the cost is, what our, our plan is going through Keith Sagala and IT. And then, you know, sharing, obviously sharing with you to let you know where we certainly will be, be headed in, in the fall. So another great, great step. The process is working, and, you know, more tomorrow coming in, probably over three hundred now that will be scheduled to come in tomorrow and the next day, and we're getting these Chromebooks out as soon as possible. So I want to thank everyone involved in that. You know, I've got a couple of other things. Within the MCAS, we, we got word Thursday night, a little after seven o'clock, and I think that was out there on channel five and channel four, that the MCAS right now, the state got a waiver, and so there won't be MCAS for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. What's out there is this whole idea of competency determination, and the commissioner says he is going to offer further guidance. You know, either he waives it, waives the competency determination, or he modifies it in, in some way. So we'll, we'll wait and see on that for those students that, that need that modification or that waiver, and we'll get further guidance. And I'll let you know as soon as I hear from the Commissioner of Education. He also shared with the Student Opportunity Act, you know, the April fourth deadline has come and gone. That next deadline, he has set is May fifteenth, a new deadline. And I think obviously he's planning on a May fourth return to, for our food and making sure that May fifteenth is done in a way that was earlier proposed with involving as many participants as possible. So we'll wait and see whether that, May fifteenth is something we need to really focus in on as we approach the May fourth return and the first deadline and see where we, where we go from there. Today, Blue Cross Blue Shield decided that they would give us the, they offered ten thousand dollars for the road race in the fall. So they also paid for a help pay for the product of breakfast, which we did not have the shield because of the closure. So they offered the money, again, seven thousand five hundred dollars, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and said, you know, use it the way you want to use it. We were talking and, and we got to appoint Keith and Jeff Fellowes, the vice president over there, corporate citizenship, that we would use the seven thousand five hundred for, as a gift, for twenty-two Chromebooks for our homeless and unaccompanied youth. So that's something we will be working on. We thank Jeff Fellowes very much, Joy Jalco, who's the director over there also. You know, just both folk, excellent, just very, very excellent advocates. So that's something that we're dealing with Leslie Bridston on and Mara on to see how fast we can, we can get that going. You know, obviously, as soon as we possibly can. With that, I believe, okay, there, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Superintendent. So I'll open up to see if Mr. Brigoli or Mr. Santoro first have comments. Mr. Brigoli, anything?
No, I'm just, I'm happy to hear about the Chromebooks because that was a concern of some of the teachers I was speaking with, that some of their kids didn't have access to some of the things that they wanted to do. So that's, that's great news. But that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Santoro, anything?
Yes, I'm ju, I'm curious about the Chromebooks for teachers as well. I mean, I know if you're, you're a teacher at home and you have a family, you have children, they may be hurting for extra technology support too. Has there been any outreach to teachers to see if they need something?
Of course, Frank, and thanks for bringing that up. I didn't mention it, that the outreach has been there and with Lent, I, I, less than, less than ten to teachers that may have just had their phone at home that needed it. So thank you for that. And the mayor also, you know, when he looks at the fall, who's also looked at laptops that if teachers need a laptop to work at home, certainly they'll have that ability to be loaned a laptop. Frank, thank you for that, reminding me of that.
Thank you.
Okay. And then any of my other colleagues that are on here that would like to speak up, is that Mrs. Hubley, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I have a quick question on the, on the lunch, breakfast program that you gave us. A couple of the schools have different amounts that were given out for lunch and breakfast, and other schools have just been, was given out. I was under the impression that the lunch and breakfast were packaged together.
Yes.
Same way at all. So trying to figure out what the amounts were different. Parker says eighty-five and seventy-six, but wouldn't it be the same total?
Some people, I, I think, if I can try to answer instead of listening more, I, I opt in, but eighty-five, so in other words, someone took a breakfast, you know, and didn't do a lunch. I, I believe they're, they're not as together. I don't know if, if someone else can hop in. But I think that they are separate and not in the same thing bag. So if someone wants to hop in to help me out, that's fine, but I think they're separate, Kath. So that's all, the numbers are different. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe I thought Mrs. Lebo raised her hand as well.
Yes, I, I did, but that was one of my questions also that Mrs. Hubley just mentioned. And the other question I got about the lunch and the breakfast distribution, it's not a question, but that's, that's on Tuesday of last week, that was ten percent of our students is pretty significant. So congratulations to all of you on that. My other question is, my other concern was the same one as Mr. Santoro's. You know, I, I didn't realize that our teachers didn't have laptops that were district distributed. So I know teachers are working on various and sundry devices of their own at home, and I'm wondering if maybe we could, I know most teachers have laptops in their classroom, but I'm wondering if we can start moving towards laptops for teachers just so they can continue their prepping at home as well. I, I think it's a big expectation for us to have our staff.
Yeah.
That we want them to move onto a digital platform, but we haven't given them the devices. So it's a consideration, I think.
Yeah. I mean, what you're suggesting is to go, is going forward, transition from desktop to all laptops. Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'm thinking for the teachers, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Gattro, did you have a comment or question?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So just, just a question for you, Mr. Andronico, and then a couple of comments from the superintendent's report. So this is just audio only on, on cable, Quincy Access Cable?
My understanding is that the video should be working for us so that folks at home should be able to, to see us. That was the understanding. I think there were, there was a hiccup at the very beginning of this, but we get on going on live. But my understanding and, and the way that I work this out with, with the staff behind the scenes is that there should video. But I'm not sure with the, excuse me, the technical glitch, if video is currently happening. I'm in the meeting, so I don't know what's happening exactly on, on channel twenty-two. I know we had, we had spoken last time just about trying to switch from, from audio to video, and that's the effort that, that we put in behind the scenes to try and make that happen. I was wondering maybe if anyone else on the line that assisted in setting up the audio and video could potentially chime in on, on current status or, or just confirm that that was the setup that we had intended? Potentially, or, or Mr. Superintendent?
I, I was under the impression that it was audio, audio only. So I don't think there's that, that picture right now. I'm not positive, but I think that.
It's, it's on channel twenty-two. It's audio only. But I mean, it would be terrific if we could move to video, Mr. Vice Chairman. And, and then the other point procedurally, I, I understand in the transmission, not everybody can hear everybody. So I don't know if it would be useful for you to summarize or just prestate the questions, Anthony, because I think you are quite audible and the superintendent seems to be audible.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. And then in terms of questions, if I could to Mr. Christopher, and I might have missed this, Dr. D, the educational packets that are being distributed. My understanding that on the Monday, all the teachers were touching the students and that there was a more direct curriculum with those. with the students. So what is in the educational learning packets? I, I got the initial ones that were distributed in the first three weeks, but I haven't seen these. What is in those packets and who should be accessing them?
Yeah, right now, I, I won't answer the, the what's in it because I think someone can help me with that, Mr. Mr. Guttrow. But I think that primarily you're talking kindergarten through grade two, that I think is the, the main audience for these packets. And three to five, and then as you get higher with the six to eight and the 9 to 12, there's really not that many. So but as far as what exactly the makeup is, I can ask either Erin or Maddie to, to bill me out.
Sure. So they're, um, they are, you know, copied grade level work so that our curriculum members have created or developed. And we have then printed those packets. So some of it is what's on Google Classroom and some of it, some of the stuff that's on Google Classroom, you're not able to, you know, make like a hard copy of it. So this stuff is, is taken directly from Google Classroom. And then all of the stuff that we, we are printing for our families is as a PDF on Google Classroom as well. So our families want to access that as well. And then in addition, in a lot of cases, we're creating packets that are individualized for different students. So like for special education, if families have requested for various reasons, depending on, you know, going on in their home life, that they would prefer through a packet instead of like virtual something, then we're creating individual packets for those families based on those students' needs and we're leaving them at the site.
Great. And then next question, Dr. D, on the, on the numbers that you said, you said 800 Chromebooks distributed tend to teachers. I didn't hear Aspen support and Google Classroom support, or perhaps you said them and they were giant numbers.
The Aspen support was over 600, primarily K to eight, looking for resetting passwords to take a look at the report cards that were published on April 14th. And the Google Classroom support is over 2,800. It could be multiple people though. It's not as accurate as the, as the other.
And, and then, so my question is, I know Bob Carvalho. I, I don't know all these people behind the scenes that are all of a sudden jumping up and doing all this stuff. Do, do we have an army of folks that work for and with Bob? Are we taking people from the city side of these contractors? Or is it just other people doing other duties as assigned to be helpful?
Yeah, there are, there are I T techs that service the schools on a, on a very regular basis and a normal situation. And those, those are the people that are assisting Bob, yes. Thank you.
Okay. And in terms of the, the, the Chromebooks, the numbers that you said, I assume that I got that accurate. What is the inventory of Chromebooks that we have? And are we close?
15.
Okay. So we, we, we have some capacity at the.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Guttrow. And I did just want to clarify with the superintendent, but the Student Opportunity Act deadline has been, has been pushed to May 15th at the earliest. That date has been necessarily set in stone. Just should be issuing further guidance on that in the coming months.
We lost you, Anthony.
I'll try and, wanted to clarify the date on the Student Opportunity Act. To double check, my understanding is it was May 15th, earliest pending state.
I heard you, Anthony.
Okay. And I was just curious if we had a plan, if, if social distancing guidelines are still in place to engage the group that, that will need to engage. But then I believe we had the first meeting with special education, English language learners, low income, just in general, high needs population that this, our plan needs to address.
Yeah, i, i, is your question, where do we go from here? If, if indeed we, the, the deadline is May 15th, what do we do? We do exactly what we did before. We go back to the drawing board, but also have to create meetings with with bodies of, of people, whether it's EL, again, EL, additional special education was also planned. And, and, and others, you know, I think we, we talked about citywide, we talked about a few of those things that we had in place until stuff just became not so normal. So I think what we would do is come back and revisit, you know, kind of where we were and then go forward. So I think it's going to take a lot more work because we're going to have to take a look at remotely, you know, making these COVID for the people that we can do. Or publicly, you know, saying going to have a meeting like this and Google Meet, you know, or Zoom, you know, see where we go. Emily, all right?
I have a question. May I, may I ask?
You were waving to me. Okay, yeah.
I just, what, what do we think this SOA money is still going to be available, Anthony? With the current economic situation?
So there, there is a meeting, a public, a, a public video stream tomorrow, I believe 10:00 AM where, with the House in Center of ways and means to discuss the budget for next year, the state budget moving forward, what revenues are and sort of initial projections for what they might be thinking. So my understanding is local municipalities should get an idea of whether that money will still be there for education or not over the next week and a half. I would expect that our next meeting, we, we should have a much better idea of if we even have that money to use or not, at which point plans, Student Opportunity Act plans in general would be sort of pending further guidance.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're, we're good to move on. The next item on our agenda is open forum. And we did something a bit different at this time where we created an email address for the public to, to email comments if they're, they wanted to submit anything for open forum. That email address was posted on our agenda so everyone could access it. Again, it was QSCopenforum@quincypublicschools.com. And I still just, I just refreshed the inbox. It does not look like anyone had submitted anything for open forum. But I do know plenty of constituents had reached out to all of us behind the scenes to express how they, they felt about particularly the topics just this week. They didn't want to do it publicly and that is okay. But it'll be here moving forward for our next meeting and, and all the virtual meetings moving forward. So now we'll move on to item five, which is old business. And with a vote on the revision to School Committee Policy 11.12.1, criteria for approval of a private school. I'm going to have Mr. Burgoli report on that. Mr. Burgoli.
Thank you, Vice Chair. This was eligible for a vote on March 18th. Obviously, we didn't have that meeting, so we're taking it up this evening. At our previous meeting on March 4th, we reviewed the request before the school committee to approve the establishment of the new private school in Quincy. The revised policy reflects the current regulations and the, and the will of the school committee. And it also reflects the guidelines from DZ and also the policy shared by the Wareham School Committee. So it's eligible for a vote this evening. And if there's any discussion, we could have it now.
So is there anyone for discussion? Mr. Santoro, do, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a question. Once people apply according to the policy we're about to vote on, how, how are they, how is it determined whether they, they pass or not? Who's, who's the judging? Who's the judge, the judging body? Is it the school committee? Is it somebody in the school system? How does that work?
If, if you're wrong, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. My understanding is that is up to the school committee. They would need to come before us and lay out their plan. It would need to meet the standards as defined within this policy of whether or not it, it meets the expectations. Mr. Superintendent, could you correct me if I'm wrong there?
No, I, I think you're, you're accurate. And Kevin Mulvey really has worked with this with, I think, Mr. Burgoli and the school committee. So if Kevin wants to add anything, but I think you're, you're right on target, but.
It is, it is accurate. Just to clarify, so the initially, under the policy as written, the superintendent will provide the final analysis for the private schools application. Any concerns obviously would be raised to you by the superintendent. And the superintendent would give his opinion with regard to whether the application should be approved or not. But ultimately, that would be, be the opinion of the superintendent. Ultimately, the school committee would then vote to either approve or not approve the application at that point.
Thank you.
All right. Any, any other discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would, Mrs. Lebo?
Going to make a motion to accept the policy?
Second, signed by Mrs. Hubley. On favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Pause.
We may want to roll call the vice chair.
I, I think that would be in order considering the virtual meeting.
Gotcha. When you're ready. Are you all right? Yeah, sorry. All right. Mr. Andronico?
Yes.
Mr. Burgoli?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda. New business discussion and vote on the proposed revised QPS school year calendar 2019, 2020. Options A and B, members should have it in front of us. Mr. Burgoli?
Well, up for a discussion and vote is the revised QPS school calendar for 2019, 2020. Option A puts in place no April break. The teachers will continue to do their remote learning, which they have started about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, and will just continue through it. Option B would have the status quo, where we'd have an April break and obviously the, the end of school remains the same. With option, with option A, we have an earlier ending date. So do we have a discussion on that? And then we'd have a vote.
Okay.
And, and by, and by, just, just to, I, I know that I've talked to probably 10 teachers who have contacted me and they're all in favor of working right through the April break. They've just got it up and running. They feel that they've got the glitches out and they feel it's running smoothly now. So they don't want a break right now. They, uh, they really do want to continue through.
Okay. Mr. Santoro, did you have anything?
Just to add that the 20th of April is still a, a day off, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. And I saw Mrs. Lebo with her hand up, so I'll defer to her.
I'd, I'd like to, like to make a motion that we moved to option A. I've heard from not only that many teachers as Mr. Burgoli, but parents who feel the same way, stop learning now. So I'd just like to make a motion and see where that goes.
Okay. Second of all, and I think there's still discussion on this. I did see Mr. Guttrow with your hand raised prior to that. I, I want to give you the opportunity to, to make some comments.
No, I, I, I think Mr. Burgoli had it right and Miss Lebo had it right. And I wanted to add to the words of the, the teachers and the parents that I've heard from supporting working through the break, also students. I can attest to, to that, just everybody feel like they're up and running and they're in a, in, in a groove right now. You know, the structure is helpful. It's important. And, you know, we just got in the groove and it would be a shame to, to put it in neutral, especially when, when we're all here in the house anyway. So that's, that's why I will support. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Hubley?
Hi, yeah. I have heard also from a number of parents who would like to continue the remote learning throughout the, the break and not take the break. So I have heard that as well. But I have also heard from a number of parents as well who have conveyed that they're not thrilled about stopping on the earlier date and would want to go through the June 23rd date for the end of schools. People have already had time off and didn't get right up in the early, as earlier, there's some other kids that did. And have also, have Chromebooks yet. There are still families that are still getting the Chromebooks, haven't even actually really started yet. So in lieu of that, I feel like I need to do diligence and bring that up as also a discussion.
Okay. I believe I saw Mrs. Lebo and then Mr. Guttrow after Mrs. Lebo.
I have heard the same thing Mrs. Hubley mentioned. Some, a lot of parents would like to just stay for the year, skip April vacation. But I'm wondering, is Allison Cox on this call at all? Do we know how the QEA feels about it?
Definitely impact bargaining here. It's, they will exceed the days.
Yeah. But even the, even the April vacation piece there, I mean, is the QEA okay with that?
I believe they're okay with the vacation piece. I'm not, I'm sure they would be on the extended into June.
Mr. Guttrow?
Now, so I was, the question was going to be, what would the last day of school be?
If we were to, A, the last day of school would be June 17th. And if we left it as is, the last day of school would be June 23rd.
And, and and, and Ms. Hubley's was suggesting what, option A with, with the four days more?
Yeah.
Right? So that would go to the 23rd, correct?
Right. So, so the, the other option, and when I say option, I, I, it's not on the table for tonight. The, the reason being, I know I've heard the same concerns from some other parents is, well, considering the move to remote learning, it might be good to have even more time. For, for the time being, we would need to enter into contract negotiations with the Quincy Education Association in order to extend the total number of days of learning within Quincy Public Schools. And as I reminded, there, there is an executive session on our agenda tonight to discuss contract negotiations in general. And that, that's a topic that we can certainly bring up at that time. But for the purposes of, of tonight and for this vote, we, we sort of need to figure out whether right now, should we continue our momentum with remote learning and not have April break? And I think a discussion for whether we want to potentially add more days to the school year is one that we can have certainly in, in the coming weeks amongst ourselves and with the public and then with the Quincy Education Association. So we're all on the same page.
Question.
Yes, Mr. Guttrow.
So you're saying because, so the original date was the 17th. You're saying work through and don't extend. Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to, with this option A is, and, and then I guess my question is, what if we had five snow days? Would we be at the 23rd?
Mr. Superintendent, I'm hoping you can jump in here and
Yeah, I think the, the, with the five days, take a look here, would most likely be the, the 23rd. Laura can help me with that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here now if you want me to, if you want me to speak to that.
Yeah. So what's the difference, snow days for these four days and?
Okay. So yeah, so what the, the first directive that came from DZ requested that, that school districts extend their school year to the 185th scheduled day, which for us would make, would, it was June 23rd. We had used one snow day in December. Okay. And that was with keeping the April vacation. And then subsequently, the commissioner said that school districts could choose to pick, to use four days by continuing through the April vacation week. And then in that case, for us, we would return to the date we were carrying, which was June 17th. That's the last day of school.
Okay. I believe I saw, I think Mayor Koch raised his hand. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Andronico. You know, there's a contract with, with teachers. They, they don't, they don't teach more than 100. Thank you, Mr. Andronico. Um, you know, there's a contract with with teachers. They they don't, uh, they don't teach more than 182 days. This, uh, there's some substantial financial issues with this. It's not just the teachers, but you got bus drivers, you got Paris. There's a lot of other implications here. In in a time when, uh, we're looking to get a little more austere going into the new year, I'm not so sure that, uh, this would be a uh, efficient way to use money to extend the year when we all know when you get into the middle of June, uh, I don't know how much learning is going on. I say that respectfully, but it's summertime.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Christopher?
Yeah, I I'm I'm thinking that, you know, maybe we take a look at, we had a discussion today with some SLT members, taking a look at what would our, what does our summer program look like? You know, and, uh, so we talked about, uh, the BRIG program. We talked about our STEM Academy program, our boot program, our special education program. You know, so we we, um, you know, the summer school at high school, you know, maybe we look at, um, extending just a wee bit and, uh, working with certainly the mayor and school committee to see where we go with that. So, um, you know, maybe there's a bit more of an extension, not extension, but connection between the end of school on June 17th and where we can begin summer programming somehow, some way, uh, and 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 possibly remotely. Maybe that's what we stick with. If, you know, if people have, uh, if students have that opportunity at home with technology and we can take a look at that and maybe that's the the, uh, connection we need to take, take a look at, um, uh, as opposed right now to thinking about, uh, extending the school year because that really is, the mayor says and uh, others have said it would it would require impact bargaining, uh, with with the school committees. You 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 may want to just take a look at this option and vote on the option and then see where we go with either impact bargaining or uh, let us work a little bit more on summer program that we can, uh, connect, maybe that June 17th and and maybe there's a week uh, after that or a little bit more, or maybe maybe a week after that that we can look at starting our summer program. Um, it's 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 just a consideration for you to to think about.
Is there, uh, is there any more discussion? A motion has been made. It has been seconded. Uh, anyone on the phone? Bergoli or or Mr. Santoro?
Um, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, just that, uh, if we get a major snowstorm between now and the end of the year, you won't have to call school off.
Thanks, Mike.
Miss, Miss, Mr. Mayor, regarding your, uh, concern about, uh, extra monies being spent, uh, if we extend this, um, is that assuming that we're going back May 4th? And through you to the superintendent?
Yeah, I mean, I I I think that's what is. I mean, I I think right now this this plan that you have in front of you that you've, uh, made a motion seconded, I think, is, uh, for for both, I I I believe. And I hope I'm not misspeaking, but I think that's really what it is, whether we come back on the 4th or we go all the way to June 17th. That clear as mud there, Mr. Bergoli?
Yeah, I just, I'm just, um, thinking about the, uh, Allison Cox and the, uh, rank and file and, uh, you know, that this, um, does impact, uh, teachers and, uh, their contract. And, uh, I think we should be, uh, aware of, um, what their feelings are regarding this.
Yeah.
And, um, I'm not sure if we should vote on this tonight or not, or if we should get some clarification. From, uh, from. Uh, I could jump in, Mr. Andronico. Um, I I think we vote for it tonight to, uh, just as you stated, to eliminate the April vacation. Uh, the date is June 17th and we can have further discussions a little bit later about, uh, whether this is a summer program, uh, how we accentuate, uh, learning opportunities for kids, but there's there's real implications with that. It's not just the teachers. It's parents, it's it's bus drivers, it's cafeteria workers. It it it's across the board, so it's a little more complicated, uh, than it sounds. So I think we should get this out of the way because the April vacation is upon us.
So I I did see a few hands up. Um, before we move forward, I I would just like to say when the the guidance came out from Desi about, uh, the local decisions for for April break, uh, I did have an opportunity to to speak with Allison Cox with the QEA. Uh, and at that time of my conversation, she was generally receptive to the idea of, uh, of removing break and, you know, over the last week, we've seen multiple school districts surrounding us, uh, also vote to to cancel April break. I received, uh, a significant number of emails and people reaching out to me within the QPS community urging me to, uh, to vote to to not, um, to to remove April break and continue the learning and continue the momentum. Um, I'm comfortable moving forward with this. Uh, I do plan to vote to remove April break. That's my plan. I meant to to make that vote tonight momentarily. Um, so with with that, I think I I am with the session on this unless there are some rule from comment, my colleagues, I want to make sure I'm not excluding anyone from a comment or. Mrs. Lebo, did you have something?
No, I'm no, I'm good. Thank you, sir. Ready to vote.
Right, uh, Mr. Superintendent, would you call the roll this and clarify a yes vote would be option A? So a yes vote is for option A, correct?
You ready?
Or should we say?
Pardon?
The motion there was, uh, in favor of option A. Um, that's the one.
Ready, Mr. Ray?
We're ready.
Mr. Andronico.
Yes.
Mr. Bergoli.
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all for that and, uh, move on to the next item on the agenda. New business discussion and vote on school choice participation. Um, Dr. DeChristopher, I will will turn this over to you, uh, for a better explanation than I can provide.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, every year we have, uh, the choice, uh, looking at school choice to say, is it the thing that we want to do is open our doors to, uh, school choice applications from other cities and towns and you know, for the, obviously since, well, for a very long period of time, we've, um, stuck with the idea that with the enrollment that we have with the space concerns that we have, uh, that we voted, um, yes on this to withdraw, uh, from school choice. So that's what I would appreciate from you this evening, Vice Chair.
Motion. Motion made by Mayor Koch. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Mrs. Lebo, is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. DeChristopher, could you call the roll?
Mr. Andronico.
Yes.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, the fiscal year 2020 quarterly budget update. Mr. Christopher and Malaney to report.
Mm-hmm. All set, Mr. Malaney. Mr. Malaney, are you with us?
Says he's on, but he's muted.
That's it.
Says he's on.
So I believe those that, uh, tuned into our last meeting will recognize this as our, uh, our intermission again.
Anthony, I think, um, Kevin Melvy went downstairs to see if Jim was having technical difficulties.
We could move on and get to the next item and come back to Jim.
Uh, Dr. DeChristopher, I'm not sure to, um, try to outlast potential technical difficulties. Um, I would like to keep the agenda moving. Um, whether, do we understand?
Three or four minutes.
Okay.
Okay. As long as Mr. Bergoli doesn't change or increase.
Excuse me, don't don't wake me up, all right?
Uh, Mr. Malaney is going to be taking over my station here so that he can give you a presentation, okay?
That sounds good.
Oh, there he is. Hello, Anthony.
Mr. Malaney, how you doing?
Good. I don't know. I dialed in and I, um, um, called.
That is okay. We will not fault you for the typical difficulty that happens to a lot of majority of the school committee members, so.
All right, um, so, uh, as you know, I mailed out or I sent out with the packets, the October, excuse me, the, uh, March 31st quarterly budget for the nine months ended. Uh, and what I did was I prepared this, uh, based on the assumption, uh, that we'll be continuing going on as we have, uh, from the beginning of the year. I included the expenses for tuitions and transportation, uh, because that was a suggestion of, uh, the Commissioner of, uh, Education. However, um, there are, uh, problems to pay any of these, uh, based on municipal finance law, uh, and which we're only supposed to be paying for goods and services that are actually received or delivered. So to that end, um, uh, I'll just go in summary through the, uh, salary lines. Uh, we anticipate, uh, 46,000 surplus in academic classroom teachers, $16,000 surplus in academic programs, $129,000 surplus in academic support and a $248,000 surplus in non-academic support, uh, for a total of $440,000 surplus in the salary lines. Uh, moving on to the expenses. Um, the, uh, only line that I'm currently, uh, projecting a surplus in is the tuition line for academic expenses of $688,000. If you recall, two years, we, uh, went into the circuit break of funding and deficit spend, uh, which they allow you to do. Last year, we had a pretty significant savings in that line that we put to that deficit. And, uh, again, this might go to a grudge that'll just shore up that fund for us. Non-academic expenses, uh, the items I highlighted would be, uh, natural gas. We figure about a $300,000 surplus. Electricity, about a $200,000 deficit. Transportation, uh, for outside vendors, $156,000 deficit. Other small ones. So overall, uh, in actual, non-academic expenses, it should balance out to be a $10,000 deficit. So overall, we'll be looking at a surplus of 60, uh, $677,000 for expenses. Um, and again, this was all based on continued spending, uh, as if we were open, uh, never shut down and we'll continue to go right through June in that manner.
Okay. Mr. Malaney, thank you for, uh, for the update. I'm going to open it up to, uh, comments and questions from my colleagues and I will start with the gentleman on, uh, Mr. Bergoli. Do you have anything?
Just, uh, do you anticipate, uh, with this, um, breakage in in, uh, service for the kids in the buildings, uh, that we'd be saving, uh, some additional money, Jim, with, uh, electricity, fuel, uh, buses, et cetera?
I would anticipate there should be some more savings. Uh, again, we we're not really, um, sure because it's only been closed for, uh, about a month. If we were, uh, closed through the through the entire month, uh, this didn't take that into account, but, uh, obviously, one of the biggest drains on electricity is the technology of the computers. So once those are off, we can see some significant savings going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Santoro, can I ask a question?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, uh, my colleagues, Mrs. Lebo.
Just have a quick question, Jim, on the second page, uh, under transportation, where you have the deficit of 155,000. Is that just out of district transportation or is that our own, Jim?
That's out of district. Um, I'm expecting a $100,000 surplus in the salary line, so those two would kind of nicely balance out. Um, but, uh, that's for out of district, uh, for outside vendors for out of district placements.
And if they're not being transported now, is there a savings now?
It it depends. They're, um, uh, paid or not. Uh, as again, I said, there was, uh, an on the desktop back on May 27th from the commissioner saying that he'd like to see tuitions and transportation paid, uh, to make sure the vendors are still available when we come back. Uh, that being said, we have meetings typically two to three, uh, a week with, uh, the Department of Education, with John Sullivan in particular, trying to figure out what we can do to to make sure that we're not paying for services that they're being reimbursed from somewhere else like the payroll protection plan. Uh, they're looking at, um, dealing with the large vendors for the indirect transportation, try and come up with some formula where they can amend their contracts. That doesn't apply to us. Uh, and again, you're looking at, uh, tuitions, obviously, if there's a residential tuition, the placement is still going on, we'd be paying that. Uh, but right now, we've gone almost to the 20th day, uh, where we no longer would be able to pay a tuition, um, under the normal course of events.
Thank you.
Okay. Were there comments and questions, Mr. Guttrow?
Thank you. Um, the, you know, the mayor mentioned it, I think, at the very beginning. Um, the, as we look ahead to the to the next budget, FY 21 budget and and that'll be grim. I mean, because obviously there's no oil taxes, no hotel tax, there's no, you know, sales tax is diminished. State and local revenue are are dropping and it's impossible to predict where they're going to be. Um, so my question has to do with this fiscal year, you know, so so, uh, I wish the mayor well and the governor well in terms of trying to project what those revenues are that we're going to have to rely on to put together a budget because it's not going to be easy. It's going to be very difficult to try. But I I, and this might be more for the mayor or for the vice board, depending on what either of you have heard. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think it was FY 2009, we had the mid-year cut from the state to the 9C cut. Is there any prospect of a mid-year, even though we're late in the year, where state, the state could come back to municipalize and say, we're just not going to make doing what we promised you at the beginning of the year? And then the second half of that question has to do with our local receipts and revenues and, um, and, you know, I'm not going to ask for the whole city, but is there is there any chance, uh, and it's good that Mr. Malaney indicated we're in a forecast, uh, what belt tightening measures should be put in place to get us through the end of the fiscal year?
Well, if if I might, um, in our discussions with the governor's team, I don't think there's going to be any 9C cuts to the state before the end of this fiscal year. But I do think for the fiscal year starting July 1, there's there's a lot more on the table. Um, and these are the kind of things we're kind of going through now with our deep dive analysis on local receipts, um, property taxes, personal property taxes, and then what we get for revenue from the state and federal government, then anticipating as best we can. Keep in mind. then anticipating as best we can. Keep in mind, even the, the greatest economists can't model this, because we've never experienced this. This is different than anything we've had. So it's gonna be very tricky. My sense is we'll get through the end of the fiscal year. Um, but I think the new fiscal year, it could be a little bit of trouble, and I think next year could be even more challenging. I do anticipate, um, to be talking to this committee, uh, probably in a couple of weeks. All the dates are a little off, because we're trying to come up with some best guess projections with the city budget and, uh, present that number to this committee. And I'd like to do that in person. I think, I think perhaps we can have a meeting in person with separation and, and a cafeteria Quincy High, for example, get it on cable so people can see it. Obviously, they couldn't come to the meeting. Uh, and then I anticipate going to the city council early May, as I usually do, with a complete state of the city on finances, and then a presentation of the municipal budget, which would include the education budget, of course. Uh, and then, of course, the debt service side and capital outlay side. I hope that helps.
Does that answer your question, Guttrow?
It, it sounds like, uh, a, a difficult next year, but this year, it's, uh, we're safe, uh, both, both in terms of, uh, the school budget and the municipal budget, right?
Getting through June thirtieth, yes.
Got it. Understood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, other comments and questions from my colleagues? I'm not seeing any, but, uh, I, I did just want to say, I mean, the superintendent had mentioned this earlier in regards to the calendar and some potential programs to set up over the summer, uh, for continuing learning and trying to fill in those gaps where, uh, some students might need to fill in, uh, he- heading into next year. And given the surplus, I was wondering if, if this potential surplus would allow us to, to build, uh, additional programming over the summer, uh, to, to fill in those gaps. And I was just curious, Mr. Superintendent, uh, what, what you potentially thought of, of that allocation?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, as we progress, you know, and according to obviously the mayor and the committee, to see where we are as we get towards, uh, the, the full year, however it ends, I think we take a look at the budget and see what we can do, um, or the, the programs that I was talking about, uh, whether it's the group program, uh, for elementary schools, or, or the group for, uh, middle school, or for education, now, or the summer school, like, uh, for our high school kids, or we have a pre-k program that's in the special education. I think all of those need to be, you know, looked at in, uh, in a, in a reasonable way. Take a look at what we can do. Um, you know, at the end of the school year to, to make sure that if indeed we have the option, that our students can extend their learning a bit to, uh, you know, I mean, in a way where, you know, where everyone is behind the eight ball a bit. And I understand where parents are coming from, where teachers are coming from. So I think that we need to look at our summer programs as they are right now, again, with EL as well, uh, to see what we may be able to afford. Um, and some of these are, are, uh, grant programs, so I think we'd be fine, you know, as long as these grants are funded with, uh, uh, again, with, uh, with the middle school and elementary program, the education program, the EL program. Um, and then we'll, grants, I think, we'll see how far we can extend, uh, these grants to include even more, even more, uh, children and, and the young adults, I think. So I think it's a good idea to take a look at it, and update the committee, not only on budget, but a reasonable way to look at, um, not only summer loss like we normally do, but also kind of spring loss as well.
Right, and I, I do wanna loop in, uh, Mayor Coke on this as well, um, considering it has to deal with, with overall budget. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I don't want to, um, necessarily get into complete budget strategy, uh, in a public setting like this, but I would suggest for, from my point of view as chief executive, I've already talked to a number of the departments on the city side. The more that can be returned to us, uh, to the general fund is gonna help us for next year. We might be able to, uh, and I think seriously, I'm looking at it now, we, we more than might, I think we'll be able to, if we have some kind of a little bit of summer program, charge that perhaps with a stimulus package, because I think it would relate directly to the COVID nineteen and the educational experience. So, uh, I, I don't think we can resolve it tonight, but I think that's the direction I'd like to go.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, okay, were there any other, uh, comments and questions? I see Mr. Guttrow with his hand raised. Mr. Guttrow?
Just one last question, and I think I picked up on what Mayor was saying. But, Mr. Mayor, are you suggesting that, uh, departments like this department that have a decent surplus at the end of the year afford you the opportunity to put in the rainy day fund, which might protect us a little bit going into the next year?
Not only the, the stabilization fund, but, you know, you're, as you recall, when you were counselor, we do the budget, and then the fall comes, and then we set the tax rate, and we finalize everything with the recap sheets with the state and all. If, if the state, you know, during the course of the year, makes some adjustments, we're gonna need some flexibility to backfill if that occurs. So it gives us more flexibility to have it, whether it's in the rainy day fund or in the free cash account, um, to keep us from doing any cuts mid-year.
And, Mr. Andronico, the only reason I raise that is that I think there's some value to maybe a subsequent update of the things that the superintendent is putting into place to, uh, tighten the budget for the rest of the year, so that we can put, uh, into, into the rainy day, basically to buffer the impact of next year. You know, if we have a surplus now, anything that we can do that does necessarily direct impact an employee, but, you know, uh, i- in, in some places, it's training, it's travel, it's discretionary expenses, you know. I don't know what those are, but, uh, the superintendent and, and Mr. Malaney and others can wrap their heads around that. And at least maybe subsequently let us know at the next meeting. These are the things, the additional steps that we're taking beyond what Malaney is saying, uh, where we see the surplus going, so that we can tighten the belt just a touch more.
No, I think that makes sense, and I mean, this, this was part of just our, our quarterly budget update to get an idea of where we are. And, uh, we, now that we have this update and get a better sense of where things stand, um, you know, we, we can move forward and explore further the ideas that we've talked about tonight and some additional measures we can take without damaging, um, you know, the education that we provide to our students and, and their families, um, moving forward. So I think that's a good idea, Mr. Guttrow, uh, as we, as we go ahead. Um, any other comments or questions from my colleagues here? Not seeing any. Um, Mr. Superintendent, did you have, have something for us?
I just wanted to make sure we roll call it, that's all. If you want, hold on it, just to make sure it's rolled.
Um, I'm not sure what we're.
Someone wants to make a motion to accept the quarterly budget?
So moved.
Second? Second?
I apologize. I, I'm, I'm not sure if something cut out. Um, did I hear what we're, what the motion or the roll call is?
Motion to accept the quarterly budget.
Here we go. Okay, so moved, and it was, it was motion accepted. Uh, Dr. Christopher, sorry about that.
That's okay. Mr. Andronico?
Yes.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Coke?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you, Jim.
My side, I'm on our agenda is the remote learning and student participation update from, uh, Dr. Christopher and his team.
Very good. Thank you very much. You know, I think our last, uh, meeting on April first, we talked a lot about our website and, you know, the communication piece that it's really, um, I think, helping a lot of people, uh, you know, in a way that touring so much that's going on in our school system about our, our programs beyond our academic classrooms. I think that, uh, we continue to improve that and improve the communication, um, and that's the website, you know, but going beyond the website and hopping into, um, the remote learning, uh, as well as always focusing on student participation. And, um, so, and I know everyone's, uh, to, the school committee has talked about student participation, making sure that uh, we monitor it, to progress monitor it the very, very best, best we can. Um, so, you know, I think what, what's happened, the first thing I, I'd like, uh, to have happen is if Mara could talk about a team that she's, or chairing, a system-wide team to, to, um, take a look at student participation, monitor it, and make sure we're, we're really, uh, contacting as many student homes as possible to make sure that our student participation is as high, um, as it can possibly be. So with that, I'd like Mara to, um, take a look from there.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm so glad to have this opportunity to speak to you about student access, um, and engagement. I know that you were very concerned as, you know, we, we're, we are, we share your concern about making sure we reach every student and make sure every student has the opportunity to engage. And so, you know, the, the issues around access to technology, making sure we, um, are able to pack it to those, because they have packets and food, and, um, you've heard a lot about that. Um, there was still some kids from the very beginning that, um, may not have engaged or had contact the way that we wanted. Um, and that happened at all levels, but I'm just gonna start with a high school at first, because it's a little more high stakes, um, with the high school since it's credit or no credit. Um, although every student across the board, we're, we're making sure that we're, we have contact with those families. And the people have done a ton of work to do that. And so, um, at the high school level, they created a referral form that we shared, um, you know, the deans and guidance counselors and, um, assistant principals and principals, um, to take a look at those kids that weren't responding to the Google classrooms. So, um, teachers would first be alerted at the high school level, you know, about their students that didn't immediately engage. I mean, the first day that, um, you know, the online learning was up and running, teachers were worried about, about their students. And so that was a great place to start making some phone calls. So there've been hundreds and hundreds of phone calls, um, to make sure that kids had, um, a Chromebook if they needed it, and how did they do that, and if they needed internet access, and, um, all those kinds of things. So, um, we've, you know, come a long way, but there's still like a number of students, um, that haven't been able to reach. Um, so, you know, you're moving through the contact cards, you're looking at, you know, uh, parental contacts, and then you look at emergency contacts and using those phone numbers and emails and, um, just as another way, as another way. Um, so, um, the superintendent asked me to, um, get teams together. And so, um, you know, today, uh, we met virtually at the high school level to talk about, okay, so where are we? And there is only, you know, five or six families at North that, um, aren't responding, and probably a little more at Quincy High. Um, and we think we have a, a pretty good handle on some of the barriers, and some of those include, you know, language barriers. So we're looking at, um, making sure we have those translators available to reach out, making sure that the materials we send out have, um, translation. Um, we are ac- actually asking the athletic directors who really wanna reach out to kids and help dig a little deeper, and the attendance officers. So, um, the assistant principals are taking the lead at the high school level with the attendance officers and with the athletic directors to dig a little deeper. So they're like the second level of intervention, following up, doing weekly, at least weekly, check-ins with those families. Um, you know, uh, that, you know, are struggling to have their children maybe engage the way that they want, or, um, they need something. So we're gonna try to figure out what it is to make that connection at the high school. So that's been going really, really well. We're gonna follow up, um, to see that we've reached every kid. It's pretty amazing that the numbers are so low, um, you know, of those families that, that we haven't engaged for whatever reason. Um, so we have a lot of resources. I mean, there's just been so much generosity, um, that's come through, um, you know, Leslie Britson's, um, contacts, um, some parent groups that have donated stuff and shop cards. So, you know, when we're making contact with families, we're, you know, seeing wh- what it is that they need, and we've been able to help out in a lot of ways, which has felt really, really good. Um, at the middle school level, um, and the elementary level, um, same thing, you know, the counselors, um, you know, we met right away virtually. So, um, the counselors were all about how are we gonna make sure no one falls through the cracks, um, and that, you know, we reach every kid. And so they've been making calls, emailing, setting up their Google classrooms, um, as a way to, you know, make sure they, they maintain that connection, talking to kids, calling kids, um, and the, you know, the principals have been on board, they've started, um, spreadsheets. But again, you know, we, we have to make sure we do maybe a more intensive kind of intervention at each level. So, um, at the middle school, the assistant principals, again, are gonna take, um, the lead in that with the attendance officers. Um, and, and, you know, they'll be the design team for that level, and they'll reach out to the guidance counselors and the school psychologists. Um, at the elementary level, we have some principals, um, and assistant principals also with the attendance officers helping out, um, to make sure that we've, we've done that. They've, sites have done a lot of this stuff on their own, but we just don't want those, those families that may have more barriers, um, that need more attention. We don't wanna leave them behind. So, um, we're making, we're making a lot of progress in that area. We're really worried about that. And I, I thank you for, um, your concern, um, from the last meeting we had about making sure we reach every family. Appreciate that. Um, through, um, the academic programs, the online learning, you know, it's a little new for, you know, phys ed teachers and, um, and counselors, and even health teachers to have Google. Well, some of the health teachers already had Google classrooms, but that's been a huge learning curve. It's been such a nice way, um, for everybody to connect to that school community. Um, and so they, they have their own lessons every day, they have check-ins. Um, really, the social emotional health, I know that was a concern, um, for the school committee last time we met. Um, it's been a concern that we share again, um, and, you know, how do you connect with these students and give them the emotional kinds of supports that they need during this, um, during this time? And, um, okay, I wanted to share with you some of the student comments, because I can go in and I can see the Google classroom. They'll be doing like at Marshall, um, just phys ed class, um, with Janice Chapman. She has a little, uh, note, a little comment from one of her students that says, "Miss Chapman, I can't wait for Monday, because we have Jim," exclamation point, exclamation point, exclamation point, "and I love Jim. It is the best. I miss you a lot, and I'm so happy that you have a Google classroom for me." So that was really nice. And then Squatom, um, Kim Riley, um, has like a wellness quarter, corner, and she's, the nurses are involved in some of these, um, classroom, all of the classrooms with guidance. Um, Rita Bailey has done a beautiful job, um, you know, making sure that she's in touch with the nurses and helping them with Google Classroom. So they've done phenomenal work. So I appreciate Rita's work on that. And Kim Riley, um, was talking about how you have to exercise your brain in one of her little mini lessons on her Google Classroom, and a child wrote, "I give my brain exercise by working on the assignments my teachers put in my Google classes." And another kid wrote that he reads a book every day. Um, Atherton Howe, um, they, they had a theme about thoughtfulness. Um, so, you know, we're always teaching pro-social skills and how to be a community member, and even during times of distance, how are you able to be a community member and show your thoughtfulness or people in your family? And, um, one little girl wrote, "I think my mother is very thoughtful, because she has to social distance from me and my sister and our whole family. She works at, at a nursing home and helps elderly people. She won't be able to spend Easter with us, and the only way I can see her is to talk to her through the window. That is why I think she's so thoughtful. I miss her and love her so much." Um, another child said, "I helped my mom decorate the house and wrap presents for my brother's birthday, and my dad is very thoughtful um, for going shopping for my grandmother, because she can't go out." So I just, I wanted to reach out to those things, because I think that, um, school community and, um, that contact and being connected in that way has meant so much, um, to all the teachers, to all the staff, and to our students. And, um, we have some real heroes, as you can see, right in our own school communities, um, that they're dealing with so much. These kids are dealing with so much, and these families are dealing with so much. Um, it's been really, um, eye-opening, I think, for, for all of us. So I just wanted to share that with you and, um, let you know that that's happening for the guidance counselors and the school psychologists to all participate in those. And at the high school level, um, you know, they've created Google classrooms for each grade, so freshmen, sophomores, and seniors have, um, Google classrooms through guidance. So anything relevant to that grade, whether it's, hey, you know, your assignment for this week is to get on Naviance and do that career, um, exploration, or there's an update from the college board, um, SATs, um, have been canceled, and, um, you know, this is, this is what's happening. So, you know, they're keeping people up to date, um, in terms of relevancy, and they're reaching out. out directly to kids. Like, kids are emailing them, they're getting back to them, resetting Aspen passwords. So, there's a lot that's happening. They have office hours. They've done a lot of outreach. So, I hope that reassures you that we're still able to connect with students and families, and we definitely will do more. So if there's anything that's of concern, you know, we want to hear about it so that we can outreach.
Thank you, Mara. I don't know, Vice Chair, if you want questions tomorrow, or do you want to just, we'll continue with remote learning with Maddie and Erin? Up to you.
I think we should continue further, and with the presentations, we'll save it to the end there.
Great. So, who's the next person, Maddie or Erin?
I'll go next. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is Erin. So, I'm going to just talk a little bit about the elementary school. So, just to kind of elaborate on some of the things that Mara said. So, you know, last week, our teachers were obviously working diligently, their first week of remote learning, and getting those classrooms up and running and the information going. And so now, we've moved into the, you know, or began to last week, middle of last week, to now, we're really, we're really trying to, as Mara said, connect with all of our families. And so I just wanted to share, you know, some more specific things that are happening at the elementary school in terms of now just really honing in and making sure that we have contact with all of our families and that, you know, students are participating in those activities and those assignments. So, you know, many of our schools, like Mara said, have created contact logs, and as they have assigned different staff to reach out to our families, they're asking, you know, questions about computers, as you heard Dr. Christopher O. talk about, does your family have access to a computer? Does your family have access to technology? And then also to share the individual remote learning plan for the students, you know, within their classrooms. They are resetting, as you heard Dr. Christopher O. mention, in addition to what we're doing up here, they're resetting Google and Aspen passwords, providing families with the class codes to the classrooms. The teachers are, all of the principals have instructed their teachers that they haven't been able to get in touch with the student or the family to let the principals know, or the team administrator know, or one of the directors, and we're reaching out. We have lists, you know, up here that we've been calling, you know, every day, calling families to get in touch to find out, you know, how we can assist them. The other thing that, you know, a bunch of our principals have moved towards is really focusing in in terms of the teachers and working with them and making sure that they understand how students can submit assignments on Google Classroom. So that way, you know, I think that's just another different way that we can track the participation and the engagement of our students, is by making sure that we're making note of who's turning in assignments. And even though at the elementary school, we're not grading them, but we are providing feedback on those assignments. So using that turn-it-in feature on Google Classroom, I think, you know, throughout the week and throughout their assignments, is a great way to monitor that. A lot of our schools are using Google Voice to call families and reach out so that they can engage them. Some schools are using, like Mara said, you know, a different kind of form of a log. They're calling it a student engagement tracker, that students are, so students that they've noticed that are struggling to engage or connect, they're making, they're keeping track of that so that they can strategize on how to reach those families through this remote learning. There was one school principal who has already called over 100 families to try to, you know, help get those kids connected. And, you know, they are, like I said earlier, in addition to the turn-it-in, they're monitoring who's responding on Google Classroom. They're updating emails in Aspen. We've definitely been providing translators to make phone calls. I just facilitated one this morning with a family that only spoke Spanish, because the student was struggling to get the child on, figure out how to get the child on the Chromebook. So we had a Spanish interpreter call the family to help walk them through, you know, get the use of the Chromebook. And then, in addition, you know, when all else fails, if we can't reach them that way, we have turned to the postal mail, and we have translated letters and mailed out letters, hard copy to families to try to say, hey, we're trying to, you know, help you, what can we do for you? Please call us, please, you know, email us or contact us so that we can help get you up and running. And then, I mentioned earlier, the hard copy packets that we are providing for families. So, if a family, you know, contacts us and tells us that they, you know, for whatever reason, as you mentioned, as Mara mentioned, there's lots of things going on in families' lives right now. And so if they can't, you know, do the virtual piece or the remote piece through the computer, then we are happy to provide hard copy packets. And the teachers have been amazing about emailing us that information, if families have requested it. And then we just make, they email us the materials. We up here in Cottington make the copies for them, and we leave it at the sites in an envelope with their child's name on it. And so, you know, and, you know, it just goes all the way down to, you know, our music staff. You know, they all have, like Mara said, they all have classrooms, even down to Mr. Kavanaugh with a color guard classroom where he's posting videos so that they can practice their color guard, I don't know what they're called, but their holds or whatever with their flags. So, they're trying, they're really trying to get everybody engaged in the different areas that they're focused on.
Thank you. How about Maddie?
Maddie's going to be using my station, so we're going to swap out for a second.
Good evening. Can you hear me, Dr. D?
Absolutely.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to be a part of tonight's meeting. I'd like to share with you some highlights from our first week of remote learning at the middle and high school levels. Starting with a high school update, both Principal Shaw and Principal Tagliari have sent recent communications to students and families describing our transition to remote learning. There are a lot of moving pieces for our high school remote learning experience, and both principals and their principal councils or cabinets have done a remarkable job getting their staff and students connected in the first two weeks of remote learning. North Quincy High School's Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning, Noreen, Noreen, what's Noreen's last, Holland, Noreen Holland. She emailed a radar roundup to students, parents, and guardians, thanking everyone for diving into the new remote learning schedule. She highlighted student artwork, remote learning from a variety of departments, student accomplishments prior to the school's closure, including this year's science fair winners. Also in the spotlight were business teachers Diana Cavallo and Matthew Gibbons, who have created an online financial literacy experience for our seniors who were invited to the credit for Fairlife, but missed the opportunity to attend due to school closures. Quincy High School emailed their president's bulletin to all staff, where Principal Tagliari outlined a weekly schedule for virtual meetings with deans, guidance counselors, and his principal's council. He shared his appreciation with staff for utilizing their online referral form to communicate needs for student outreach and support. Both principals are very grateful to their department heads for doing weekly outreach to their department members. High school legislators in need of support or training in online platforms for remote learning are collaborating with colleagues and administrators, or taking advantage of our remote professional development. A special shout-out to Natalie Cody, Quincy High School's librarian, for creating a K-12 library team blog that can be accessed from our QPS website under Family Resources. The library blog is full of resources and direct links to the Thomas Crane Public Library, as well as each of our own online high school and middle school library pages. Another shout-out to Michael Hanson, North Quincy High School Art Department Head, for designing an art education blog for students and families seeking ideas and resources for creative outlets. Both of these online resources can and will connect a student or family member to their school's librarian or teacher. For our middle school update, middle school principals have shared a number of positive remote learning experiences through their staff weekly for April 13th. While not perfect, there seems to be a tremendous amount of online participation between students and staff. Middle school teachers have been encouraged to communicate their weekly lessons and activities to parents through Aspen email, and then communicate directly with students through the Google Classroom or Aspen teacher pages. Some learning experiences continue to be provided through hard copy learning packets, conference calls, and direct mail. Some highlights from our middle schools include weekly virtual meetings with staff, students, and parents, live virtual classes, online read-alouts, one-to-one math feedback, and science projects designed for online, at-home, or the outdoors. Middle school principals have expressed their gratitude to Dr. Christopher O., Mayor Coke, and Keith Sagala's distribution team for making Chromebooks available to families of middle school students. Teachers are reporting online student participation ranging from 75 to 100%. Week one consisted of a lot of shared time for catching up and reconnecting, and middle school teachers will take this week to finish up review and move forward with our curriculum. Our middle school highlights include recognition for our teachers who are creating from scratch or redesigning online platforms for student learning, staff members who have created online newspapers or virtual spirit weeks to keep students motivated and engaged, English learner educators who are using both online tools and the U.S. Postal Service to ensure that students are receiving appropriate learning experiences and translations. And also a shout-out to our administrators and guidance counselors who are making daily phone calls to students and families. Thank you for your continued support. Kevin, thank you.
Thank you. And Mara, did you have anything else to add on the remote learning, or we all said?
I think, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Unless you want me to...
I know we're okay.
Thank you for the presentations. I really appreciate that. I know you're putting in a ton of work behind the scenes and working literally around the classroom. So I do want to open it up to comments and questions from my colleagues. I'll start again with Mr. Bregoli, if he's on the line.
I am.
Do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, to anyone. Do we have a percentage of our students who are participating in the remote learning overall? I know we have 9,500 kids in the school system, and I'm hearing from some teachers that they're not able to connect with some of their kids. So, I'm wondering if we have a percentage of kids that we are connecting with on a consistent basis?
I think we need to, if I could, if I share, I think we need to really check on that. You know, it's been, you know, not that long, and I think we need to work with that. And as I mentioned, the whole progress monitoring piece, we need to really talk more with the principals and the teachers to see what the actual, you know, I know you're saying, ballpark percentage of how many of our students are actively and participating in remote learning. And I understand what you're saying, with some teachers saying, you know, we're not getting 100% of our students, or we're getting 80%. You know, and what we're doing is, as Mara had said, we're working hard to get as many of our students, you know, involved as possible, for those calls are going out. So I think it's going to be just a wee bit before we can say, you know, a ballpark percentage of how many of our students. So we haven't really done that, but it's certainly something we will get to.
Okay, thank you. And I, just one other quick question. In speaking with Allison Cox, one of the concerns that I had, and related to her, was the PD requirement, and hoping that some of our veteran teachers, we'll put it that way, are not as familiar with, like myself, with some of the new stuff, like for Google Classroom, et cetera. And can they get PD in a short period of time to bring them up to speed?
I think, and I can, you know, Erin and Maddie can hop in, but I'm pretty sure that the, one of the professional development, one or two of the professional development opportunities that I mentioned hold exactly that. So, they're getting the PD, they're doing the PD, and I think it's increasing their knowledge, as well as their confidence in the online learning piece and technology. So, we do offer that. Will they get PDPs? Absolutely. And credit for the hour. So, that part's going very well.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Santoro, comments, questions?
No, just that I expected to hear a lot of complaints about connectivity between home and school, and I really didn't get any. And I want to, this is quite an undertaking, and I just wanted to truly appreciate everyone's hard work, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Comments, questions for my other colleagues? Mr. Guttrow?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to the teachers, the principals, all the staff in the school buildings, who I agree with what Maddie and Erin said and Mara about women's work in terms of students. I really think they're doing a good job in trying to reach out and connect with every student. The, you know, I heard a lot about the procedures and some anecdotal feedback, but we do have Marissa, our data guru. And so ultimately, I mean, what I'd like to see is some data on a whole bunch of different things, you know. I mean, I know each week, and maybe more frequently, we're connected with the teachers, and teachers connect with the students. And I think it was Mr. Bregoli who said, you know, he's heard from several teachers, as have I, and perhaps my colleagues, that, you know, might have excellent students in their class, but they still can't connect with one or two. And it's not difficult to collect that map on a class-by-class base to a school-by-school base, and then ultimately up to the district, you can see by school, by grade, by, you know, whether it's middle school, after-school, or high school. So, that's interesting. And then the other piece of information is about the technology access week. We went over a technology survey that was distributed to us, and now I think we've done a week or two of ground truthing. And it would be curious to me on whether or not the ground truth yielded, that the original survey results that we had were accurate, or how they differed. So, getting that information. And then, I think the most important question, you know, not just reaching out and connecting and saying, hey, we've connected with every student, but engagement. And how do we measure engagement for, you know, I mean, is engagement in a metric that decides, is metric, is engagement, you know, are there metrics around non, no engagement, low engagement, higher engagement, constant engagement? How do we measure that? Because I think that's the key part. And, you know, and I'd rather rely on data than anecdotally, because the anecdotal information that I'm hearing suggests that, you know, there's a small percentage of hyperactive people that are constantly engaged, and there's a much larger portion of folks that are either moderately engaged or not engaged. You know, we may have called them, or we may have got them, we may have got there. So, the data and the metrics about that, I'd like to see going forward, because I think, you know, I believe we have at least a few weeks left, but I think if we're wise, we're planning for the school year. And having that, those metrics and measurements on student engagement, I think are going to serve us well if we had them today, as opposed to waiting another two weeks or three weeks for that. So, thank you, Vice Chair. I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that.
I would say the benefit, the benefit of all those, you know, I think are very beneficial. I don't know about today, but I think that eventually, you know, this is something that's brand-new. So when you talk about, you know, the amount of metrics that you're talking about, the amount of data that we're talking about, yeah, I mean, we certainly can take a look at that. But I think that that, you know, for you, absolutely, far more important for us, you know, to take a look at that sort of data and see where we go with that. So I appreciate, you know, what you're saying. I just think that this is brand-new, and to get the data that, you know, when we talk about the data, and when we make sure the data is sound, it took a little bit of time. So I think we'll get there. I appreciate that.
So, and ultimately, the concern is, are there grades? Are there schools that are lagging behind, that we need to pay attention to? And that's why, you know, having real-time data or time-relevant data on a weekly basis can help the leadership team, your leadership team, Mr. President, to say, yeah, these are the schools, these are the issues, these are the problems. So make this principal and their team needs our support to help do it, and we'll be right away to do it. So, that's why I really think, and it's pretty, you know, granular data, and the teacher just reports to the principal. And whatever the metrics are, you dole them down to the principal and then to the teacher. And, you know, and it's just measuring engagement, you know. So, not easy stuff, especially starting out of the box, and, you know, with no prior history. But I just want to make sure that we're not letting anybody fall behind across the board, you know. And I, you know, you know that the folks at Central are going to do exceptional, and all the engagement is there because they have the APD program. But I want to make sure that every neighborhood's fault is also doing equally well, and they're screening for engagement. So, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Vice Chair. So thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Begoli.
I actually did have a question for, for Mr. Guttrow on that. You had said you wanted to measure the difference between just standard connection and engagement. I was, I was wondering if you maybe explain what you mean or what really the difference between, or you would perceive as the difference between connecting with students and families and engaging with students and families.
Well, I mean, what do I mean? I mean that teachers have spent, you know, immediately trying to connect with people, meaning reach out and have an engagement with the student or the parent right out of the box to establish that connection. I mean, I, I suspect, and this is where I'd like to see the data, that there are some students or parents simply have not responded, whether it's a, a language issue or some other reason. But is that a microscopic number or is that a concerning number? I don't know, you know. Only the teachers know how many zero responses they got. And I suspect, you know, some of the folks said at the high school level, they're referring it, and, and principals are making phone calls. You know, and, and guidance counselors and others. I, I just want to make sure that there's not a school that doesn't have that quote surround care, to use your terminology, Dr. D. That, that all of them. And it's not just the first connection to say, hey, we reached the student, we talked to the student, the student's good. But then it's, it's measuring engagement on a weekly basis around assignments or whatever the connectivity is. How, I don't know how you measure it. You know, I know how they measure it online at the college level. I don't know how you measure it, especially when you're not necessarily grading at some levels, but you want, you want to keep that connected. And, and at the end of the day, you want all of the students in September to start as equitable, you know, in the next year as possible, as much learning as they can. So it's just trying to figure out how, how to reach them all and, and pull them forward, especially those that might be falling through the cracks. And like I said, it's, it's not difficult data to get. It's, it's teacher to student and then teacher up to the principal and then principal up to the superintendent.
All right, we'll move on to Mrs. Lebo, and then Mrs. Hubley had something after that.
Thank you, Mr. Andronico. First of all, I want to thank the people that did network at the high school level. That's incredible that you have so few students, families who have not yet been engaged. But to piggyback on what Mr. Guttrow was saying, I really do think that Marissa Forrester should be involved in this as we start to look at this data. Because what I'd like to know is what percent of the students are going online? And more importantly, what percent are signing on daily when they're supposed to be signing on? And I know that we don't have that data yet, and I don't expect you to have that data yet. But I think as you start making these data systems, if we can get Marissa involved with that, so we can make it a lot easier than people reporting to multiple places to get that information out to us, it would be great. The other thing that I'd like to, should I stop there? No? The other thing I'd like to say, I've spoken to parents and kids at all of the levels. I've had people sending me their kids' schedules, and the schedules are really robust and looking really good. So I really am incredibly impressed with the teachers. And as Mara said, the specialists are doing wonderful things. They really are. They're reaching out to the kids. Literacy specialists, the special ed teachers, the physical therapists, everybody's reaching out to the kids who need that. So I think it's very, very impressive what's going on. Talk about the professional development opportunities, though. I was hoping there'd be even fewer professional development opportunities, because I think we still have teachers who are struggling with the online community. And I think I would have liked to have seen maybe some suggestions about if you're having that struggle, that you take that kind of professional development. Because one of my biggest issues is, we're going to go back to engagement. Yes, the students can be engaged with the, with the virtual work, and they can be engaged in online work. But real time engagement is happening for some kids in our district, and it's incredibly important, especially the little kids to have that stuff. There are principals and teachers doing meetups, but there are other whole groups of people who are not getting that access. I know it's difficult for teachers. It's not easy for all teachers, but I think we need to find a way to give them the professional development and for them to be able to support each other. I'd love to see the professional development also be collaborative, so the English nine teachers can work together on the curriculum, and then they can specialize on pieces of it. I know that's happening with some of the elementary schools, and it's great. And then my last two are more questions than concerns, but maybe for the next meeting, Mr. Andronico, we can talk about what's going to happen to the GPA at the high school level especially, and also what's going to happen with the elementary APP program if we don't get back to school.
Right. I know those are concerns that have been raised by the committee before, and my understanding is, you know, Dr. Forrester has spoken at least about the GPA issue and having internal discussions about what recommendation for that should look like moving forward. But I want to sort of hand it off to the, the leadership team to maybe comment on your comments, your questions that we've had as well.
As far as the APP and GPA, I mean, the GPA, we can talk about with the principals and we can have them actually at your next meeting and report to you on, on the GPA. The APP, it's far more difficult in a sense to do anything like that remotely. So it depends on where we go after May fourth, if there's time in there to, to establish the assessment, to then go from the assessment into who would be participating in the APP. We can do that. If it goes, if we go all the way to the end of the year, I think it may be, you know, virtually, you know, impossible to say, these are the students that will be there and would have to wait until September and to do something at that point, and then to create the program in participants, you know, at that point on a rolling basis, rather than as we normally do just start in September.
Okay. Mrs. Hubley?
Yep, thank you. I have a question for Mara. So with the families that are first responders, so like if a parent, if a child might have two first responders in their house, are the teachers given instruction on how to, like, reach out to those kids and let them know that if at the high school level where it's credit and no credit, that they could, might need a little bit more time if they have a parent that's doing a longer shift and they're worried and they're having anxiety over their parent being at work. Are they reaching out to them and letting them know that they might have a little bit more time to get their work in if needed?
So I know that if you're talking at the high school level, I know that counselors are, you know, doing, and the deans are doing direct calls for kids that aren't engaged. I mean, there's, you're, I think everybody's correct in saying, you know, there's kids that aren't in any contact and there are very few of those kids. But then there are kids that aren't as engaged as they would want them. So there's all kinds of reasons, you know, for that. There's all kinds of barriers for kids and families. I don't know specifically about, you know, families with first responders. I, you know, obviously, you know, just from that one little sentence that I, that I read to you, that that's obviously a family with a first responder, and that does bring on different stressors. I do think there are different stressors where, you know, parents, you know, dealing with the law and having the responsibility of keeping their child engaged academically is, you know, that's, that's hard. So, you know, if we know that, we have heard from families, you know, that like this is really difficult, you know, and especially like in our alternative ed programs too, like, you know, keeping those kids engaged. There's been a lot of parent outreach and contact, phone contact, ongoing communication, you know, with Quincy Evening High School and the Goals Program and PASS. And, you know, there's been a lot of work there, you know, wherever there might be a kind of barrier. But I think that people are really sensitive to, this is going to be difficult for some kids. And if they're not seeing that kids are engaged, they're doing direct outreach. But you know what? That's like a good question I can pose to the guidance staff. You know, like, what are some of the things that families are having difficulty with beyond, you know, access to technology? Like, I mean, access to technology is your first step, do you know what I mean? Like, but then there's like, okay, what happens after that to make sure that kids are engaged? So, you know, we're meeting on a regular basis to make sure that kids, because we don't want anybody to fail. You know, we don't want this pandemic to be the reason why, a reason why a kid would fail in high school. So we are really sensitive to that. No one should fail. Like, there's an opportunity here for, for it to be manageable and we can get connected and succeed. So I think those are really good questions. I think we need to dig a little deeper. So I thank you for bringing that up, and I can check in with people.
Okay. Other question I had too was at the beginning, the superintendent mentioned how we were getting money from Blue Cross Blue Shield in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars to be used for Chromebooks, to use for students who are homeless and unoccupied youth. Can you tell me where, whereabouts in our school system would be more, are these at the high school level, the middle school level, the elementary level, that these students would be needing these Chromebooks at? Where is this, this money is going towards these Chromebooks for, which is an early grade level?
So it's spread out, like, any kid that, you know, happens to be, like, you know, we have, you know, delivered Chromebooks. You know, I dropped off a Chromebook at a homeless shelter. So like, you know, we're making sure, I think we're mailing one to New Bedford. So, I mean, I think Keith and his team, you know, looking at all the requests to make sure that, you know, Chromebooks get to where they need to go. And that is our displaced kids. So Leslie Britson has been working really hard about checking in with all of those unaccompanied youth kids. And she made sure that they all had technology so that, you know, you know, those kids, I think, are in pretty good shape. But then you have younger kids that are in transitional housing or shelter setting. And so I think that we are the focus to be to make sure that they're all set. So I don't know if Keith and the superintendent, I'm sorry, I wasn't part of that conference. The needs are because they're distributing all the, you know, and I know that there's been delivery too for, for other families that couldn't kind of get here.
Needed, how many, because it's a seven thousand five hundred dollars worth of them. I didn't know how many that was going to be able to purchase and how many kids were, were needing to be given to out of this money that we're still needing.
Well, i- if I could, Mara, if I could hang on. Mara wasn't involved. This just happened late morning, so with Miss Bello. So we haven't really done the research that we really need to do, but the seven thousand five hundred would, would purchase twenty-two Chromebooks. So where that's distributed, we certainly can have Leslie talk to Mara about where the need really is and make sure it gets to those needs. So I apologize, but it happened. And actually, I left Mara out of the conversation right now, so she was probably surprised and pleased to hear that. So, sorry, Mara.
Good news.
But we'll get back to you, Mrs. Hubley and the committee, on where the need is and how they're distributed.
Okay, I just want to make sure that our, that our students that are homeless and unoccupied are actually getting their Chromebooks they need. They were out of the three hundred Chromebooks that were still being distributed. I said now there's twenty-two more. I just, this is, I just want to make sure I know where these, these students are getting access to technology.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any more of my colleagues' comments or questions? Feel free to speak up. Mr. Guttrow?
Yeah, a question for you too. I think it's picking up on a comment that Emily mentioned earlier about the APP tests. And, and Dr. D, I think you were muffled a little bit, and, because I didn't quite follow it. But it was about notification to parents and students and when the test might happen. Did you talk about that, fourth, fourth grade students? You did not?
For the APP program, yes. I just mentioned that if we continue to, if we come back to school, there's, there certainly may be an opportunity to assess our students and come up with the students that will be participating in September. If we go all the way to June seventeenth, you know, remotely, I think it would be virtually impossible in order to do that. And we most likely would begin that when we come back to school in September to, you know, to assess. And then start the program, but the program may start a bit later.
So they, they, but you already know who the students are?
I, I, no, we need to, we need to assess the students, the, the grade four students for the grade five.
To take the test?
Pardon?
The students that are eligible to take the test? No?
Yeah, the students in grade four are eligible to take the.
All, all, you're saying all students in grade four are eligible to take tests?
True, yeah.
Okay.
I believe, is that true, Erin?
So there is a, there's a screening process. It's a couple of different steps. And so the first step is that they have scored within the top twenty percent district wide combined score in the MCAS. So that list, you know, we have, but then they take the comprehensive testing program, and that is two assessments. It's the quantitative assessment and the verbal reasoning assessment. And so that's actually a cognitive reasoning assessment that's online, but it is, you cannot administer that remotely. So that's the, it has to be proctored. So that is, that, you know, that's obviously one of the issues that we're discussing.
So when, when you say that has to be, that has to be proctored, you know, so just make that before, before all this, is it matter trying to figure out how to do it? Or is there just no way to administer it? Virtually.
There's no way, it, it wouldn't be valid to, like any standardized assessment, it wouldn't be valid to administer it virtually. It's supposed to be proctored like you're in the room with the students.
Okay, but, so what about the notification with the students that you already know? Would you not notify that they're eligible?
We can certainly talk, I can talk to the superintendent about that, about sending out that notification. Just, we just don't have it. Usually we have it solidified as to when we're going to have the testing, but we don't have that right now.
Yeah, you know, my sense is that there are a lot of parents that are interested to know one way or the other, and they wouldn't want to wait all the way to September if we have to do that, you know. So just something to think about.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, other comments and questions from my colleagues? Hearing, hearing none, we'll, we'll close that item on the agenda and we'll move to item ten. Move to special education and update.
Yeah, thank you. And Mrs. Perkins, you're back on the hot seat.
Okay, so in special education, we have been moving forward. So we've been meeting virtually with the staff, you know, once to twice a week, and that's all staff. That includes speech pathologists, occupational therapists and physical therapists, as well as the special education teachers and the chair people. I think I'm meeting with the chair people tomorrow. And so, you know, just some of the things that have taken place is that we have begun virtual IEP meetings. So I think pretty much every school at this point has had a virtual IEP meeting. And if they haven't, they're having it probably either today or tomorrow. So those are happening. The virtual services are up and running for the most part. So, you know, the same as the remote learning for the regular education teachers, teachers are teasing that out. We're still working on notifications to the families, although the, the teachers have all made that initial contact. And then, like I told you earlier, we are, you know, calling and continually trying to get the families that we haven't been able to connect with, which we're, you know, we're, we're whittling down that list. But the, you know, but the, what we are working on, although we've had those initial conversations about what the services are and the services have began, have begun, we have to send out, per the regulations from, or the guidance from the Department of Education, we have to send out a notification about the agreement of what those services are. So we're working on getting those out there. And we are also working on, you know, something that has come up is the, the, the families that had started testing or were in the middle of testing or were requesting testing because of concerns with students that, you know. So that is something that, you know, we're, we're hearing from families and we're trying to work with them on how to provide them with services, because unfortunately, we're not able to test them remotely. So, so, you know, we're working with them to see how we can provide some services to assist with the concerns while we're in this school closure period, so that those children are, you know, if they're, if they're struggling or there's something, you know, happening with them, we want to make sure we're helping them, even though they might not yet be considered a special education student. And just something I didn't highlight last time that I should have is some of the additional things that our BCBA's are doing. And they're actually offering parent trainings to our students in the CARES classrooms and in the Learning Center classrooms. And so if you hear families out there that are struggling, you know, that we don't, we, maybe we don't know about yet or haven't contacted us yet, definitely send them our way, because some of the topics that they're dealing with or they're working with families on, and they're providing virtual training sessions are behavior management was one topic, structure and leisure time. They have multiple options too, so there's like three different times that they offer it during the week. Using visual supports to support their children is another topic, creating and following an activity schedule. Teaching and maintaining academic skills at home is another topic. Teaching and maintaining cell. Teaching and maintaining self-care skills at home, um, is something that we're offering. Promoting functional communication and organizational and time management skills for our middle school and high school students. So those are all virtual parent trainings that are being conducted with our, um, board certified behavioral analysts.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Perkins. Uh, I'll open up some comments and questions from my colleagues. I will start again as always with Mr. Bergoli.
No, that's a great presentation, Erin. Thank you.
Mr. V?
Okay, uh, Mr. Santoro?
Yeah, just a, a question for children who are receiving, uh, their education in private placements. How is that working, Erin? Did I miss that? Um, did you say anything about?
I actually didn't. That's a really good question. So they, the private school placements are, have the same mandate that we do. To provide, um, the, you know, the virtual learning, the remote service, um, plans for the students, um, that they're servicing. And so the team administrators have actually not only reached out to all the out of district placements, uh, but also their students on their caseloads. So we actually have called all of the families and all of the outside placement schools just to make sure. And in some cases, we have had kiddos, you know, referred to us, um, especially like maybe some of our CARES kids, things like that. That needed some additional support. Um, and we've, we have set them up with our BCBA's to provide some home services for those kids.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, uh, other comments and questions? Uh, Mr. Gutrow, go ahead.
I was just saying, uh, actually, Erin, um, and, and not right now, but, uh, when, when we do it holistically. The same, same holds true for special ed, that, you know, for the rest of the school system that I'm interested in, which is the data. On all of that, the connection, the access to technology, the engagement, whatever the metrics are. That we're universally applying to monitor student learning in this, uh, these crazy times.
Yeah, definitely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. D?
Certainly, if, if there are no more questions, I have just a, a statement that I want to read. Uh, so that's up to you, Vice Chair, if there, if it's time, if it's appropriate.
I do just want to double check with, uh, Mrs. Lebo if she has come in a question.
I have just a, a quick comment, Mr. Andronico. Um, just, uh, what I said before, I've heard from several parents that they're getting incredible services from the special education department. So I want, I just want to thank Erin and the teachers. It's even harder to do that than it is to teach math, to do PT and OT virtually. So kudos to those guys.
Thank you.
All right, and, uh, Mrs. Hubley, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to know, how do parents find out about the parent training? Is it on our website or?
Um, no, I have the list. So if you want to direct them to me, what I can do is I can put them, I can put it up on, um, my, my blog that I have there, um, too. So you can share it and access it that way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing none of the comments or questions, Dr. D, back to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Vice Chair. No, I just want to make sure, and I think you've said it, you know, all of you have said the same thing. That we are tremendously fortunate with the teaching staff, uh, that we have, the academic program staff that we have. The academic support staff, everyone working together to go forward and, and, and really make sure that all those habits of the mind and habits of the heart. That we talk about are happening as best as we possibly can remote, remotely. And I want to thank the parents for being so supportive, you know, of their, of their program. Um, you know, not easy, not easy at all, but I think they're doing a terrific job. I want to thank the parents. I want to thank our professional staff. Our, uh, certainly our principals, our SL team, and Owen's here, you know, uh, we're working there every single day. And, uh, I know you know that, I know you appreciate that. But really, I think we are very, very fortunate to have the professional staff, uh, that we have. Uh, the administrative leadership that we have and the commitment and the dedication to our kids, not from all of us. Uh, it's, uh, it, uh, changes daily and everything is new and different. Um, so I, I think that we'll, we'll go forward and we'll be more confident and we'll keep learning as we go. So I would thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Far. Um, with that, uh, the next item is executive session with nothing after that. I would entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn into executive session, um, and then close out the meeting. So is there any motions for? Motion, motions by Mrs. Hubley. Do I have a second?
On, on the motion?
On the motion, Mrs. Lebo?
Yeah, I just want to know, do we have, when is our next meeting scheduled for before we dismiss this one?
Uh, we do not currently have another meeting scheduled. Um, the way that we are working through this at the time. Uh, is to schedule special meetings as, as we move forward. And I've been scheduling those meetings with input from all of my colleagues about when, uh, that's appropriate time, uh, to schedule another meeting is. Per the guidelines that had, uh, sent out when schools closed weeks ago. Uh, was that all Quincy Public Schools events, including meetings, uh, would, uh, excuse me, school committee meetings would, uh, would also be canceled. So that's sort of how we're operating right now. And of course, Mrs. Lebo or to any, any of my other colleagues. We have an opinion about when our next meeting should be. By all means, please let me know. Um, you know, I, I want to give our staff enough time to prep for those meetings. But the same, and I want to go at home to know that, uh, we're checking in regularly to make sure, moving as they should.
And I'll second it.
And the motion that was seconded by Mrs. Lebo. Uh, okay. Um, I am on motion, seeing none. Dr. DeCristofaro, can you call them all?
Mr. Andronico?
Yes.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mr. Gutrow?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yeah.
And Mayor Coke?
Uh, before I say yes, I assume we're not going back into regular session, correct?
That is correct.
That's what he said.
To be clarified. Okay, very good. I'm yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All set, Vice Chair.
Thank you. And as a reminder for, uh, all the folk, folks that are on this call. Uh, there is another dial-in, um, that is separate from this one that you will need to join, uh, particularly through executive session. And I'd like to wish all the, uh, at home, thank you for tuning in. I wish you good health moving forward and, uh, enjoy the rest of your week. All right, goodbye, everyone.